So first, before we have public comment, if the applicant could give a small presentation to the public and then we will begin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Rubin. I'm with Brown and Weinroth. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I want to first thank the planning board chair, the members of the planning board, the town attorney, Mr. Ellsworth, the engineer. As Norm mentioned, for over six months, we've been sort of shepherding this project to this point. A lot of people have given their time and effort to reviewing the project. The planning board has given us invaluable input and they have made these plans infinitely better. We generally appreciate that. And I want to thank all of you for giving up your time to your families this evening to be here and to engage in this process with us. I'm heartened to see so many people who are interested in the process. I think that this is the most important part of this process. You are our future neighbors. You are our future partners. We want to hear from you. We want your input. We want your comments. We intend to be here continuing the proud tradition of Camp Kitatini. Tell me, I'm not the only one who has trouble with that. Camp Kitatini for generations to come. Prior to tonight's meeting, we've done as much as we can to get information about the camp out to you. We have a website called campkitatini rediscovered dot com. I encourage all of you to go there. There's a ton of information about the history of Camp Kitatini, about Northgate Resorts who will be operating, Camp Pimfo, some of the world-class properties, award-winning properties that they operate all throughout the country. There are, some of the images that you're going to view tonight are also there. There's also a place for you to send us questions, so I encourage you all to go there if you haven't been already. On the board there, you'll see some images and we've made those available in the town hall for the last several weeks. With the help of the Sullivan County Partnership, we had a meeting on September 15th where I understand 75 members of the community showed up and engaged with us about the project. I want to thank them for hosting that. I want to talk to you a little bit about our plan tonight. I'm going to be brief because there are a lot of you and as I mentioned at the beginning, this is really about us hearing from you. At its heart, this is a plan to revitalize a staple of this community. Camp Kitatini has been making lasting memories for families and campers for nearly 80 years. Our plan is to build on that proud tradition and we're going to do it in such a way to make it safer, cleaner, a more family-friendly environment, and to help it continue to be an economic engine in this community long into the future. I want to talk about a little bit how we're going to do that. So I have some images here that I'd like to share with y'all. Uh-oh. I know how to work this. This is a little... Oh, that one's good. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. But many of you probably recognize this. This is Camp Kitatini. What is displayed here is a plan for its revitalization. You'll see some of these call-outs show some of the new amenities that we intend to add. And the plans that the company views also show the significant investments that we intend to make in the infrastructure. First thing you'll notice when you review those plans, and again, they're on display at the town hall and will be after this meeting. We're going to be making significant changes to the flow of traffic. I know a lot of you are concerned about traffic. We're going to be reducing the number of curb cuts along the highway. We're going to change the way that traffic flows into the camp, so we reduce backups on the main road, and also make it safer for people who are at the camp. We are actually reducing the number of campsites. There's been a lot of talk about that. We're reducing the number of campsites. We're actually taking what is currently a maximum occupancy of 2,838 campers, we're reducing that by more than 17%. As currently envisioned, there'll be occupancy for 492 less campers. So that's another way that we're going to help impact traffic and make this site a little bit cleaner and safer. The other big thing that you're going to notice about our plans is the investments in infrastructure. So we're dealing with a camp that's been built up over the course of eight decades. There are some legacy systems there, and they're important ones: water, septic, electric. We're going to update those. Those are going to be completely modernized. We have some of the best engineers anywhere working on those systems to make sure that they will be high-performing, that they will be at the highest standards for the treatment of water that campers will be using, as well as the treatment of septic. As I mentioned earlier, the plan here is to create a more family-friendly environment. And I understand in the past, Camp Kitatini attracted a lot of one-off campers. It wasn't necessarily a family destination. By making it more of a family destination, we also hope to increase the average length of stay, which again, will increase the number of people coming in and out of the camp. Some of the amenities that we're going to be adding in order to encourage families: upgrades to the look of the general facilities. We have a mountain coaster, which is not a roller coaster, that's a common misconception. This coaster is very low to the ground. It doesn't make a lot of noise. By the way, none of these facilities operate after dark. People come out to camp, they want to enjoy the outdoors, they want to enjoy the evening sky. We appreciate that. We're not running these facilities after dark. We're adding lighting. We're adding lighting that's compliant with dark sky requirements. In addition to the mountain coaster, we have a jumping pillow. As a father of a four-year-old, I can tell you that you have to keep them entertained. My daughter was recently on one of these at a local farm, and she literally wouldn't get off it. She loved it. There's been talk about a water amenity. This is the water amenity. Again, it's designed for children because as anybody with small children knows, you need to keep them entertained, you also need to keep them cool. So that's one of the ways that we're going to make this a more family-friendly environment. Forks courts, new entry sign, miniature golfs will be added. We will be paying significant attention to landscaping so that these amenities are as protected from the road as possible to preserve the view along the main highway. We're also going to be upgrading the facilities at the camp where our guests will stay. Currently, what you have are a number of tent sites. People bring their own tents, they bring their own RVs. That means RVs are on the main road, clogging traffic. If those RVs aren't well-maintained, it means they're leaking fluids. What we're proposing to do is to have the amenities already here, so people aren't coming with their RVs as much as they're coming to stay in one of ours. We'll be maintaining these on-site, just to show you a couple of the images of the different types of sites that we'll be making available. Camp Kitatini is an economic engine, there's no doubt about it. It's been bringing people here, it's been creating jobs for decades. We want to continue that. As designed right now, we plan to add 89 full-time equivalent employees. That's over $2.5 million in annual wages. We think that modernizing this campground, improving all of the infrastructure, will be a great way to preserve that economic future going forward. And more importantly, that modernization has to take place. Camp Kitatini can continue to run as it, with systems that need to be improved, particularly septic, water, traffic. I could speak about this camp for hours. On a personal level, I am so excited to come from Albany with my family and enjoy this camp and everything that your community has to offer. My ride down today and the smile on my face, I love it. But I'm not, but I'm really here today to hear from all of you. So as Norm mentioned, we're not going to be responding to your comments today. There are a lot of you here. I don't even think it would be possible to both take and respond to all of your comments. But also, a project like this requires multiple experts across different disciplines, so for me to respond to all your questions really wouldn't be the best and fairest way for us to convey those things. So as Norm mentioned, we will respond, we will respond after the meeting in Rockville. I thank you all for your time tonight, and I really look forward to this conversation. Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you. I'm happy to be here. My name is Glenn Pontier. I live at 8 Old Madison Fort Road. I'm a neighbor of Camp Kitatini. I'm here in part because I got a certified letter inviting me to come. This is a little more structured than the letter implied. It said it was informal, I want to hear your opinion. I appreciated the presentation. I like living near the campground. Kitatini is not the only one. Landers has one, Indian Head has one, Cedar Rapids used to have one. I like seeing the people there. People are having a lot of fun. I like watching them go down the river. It can get a little noisy sometimes on the weekend. That bass comes through, and my dog doesn't like it as much as I do. But it's a great use of the river, and I like to see the river continue to be used by people who come and visit. I have three issues, and other people may have others. The first one is, as paving is done, I would hope that pervious paving would be used so that there's not an additional runoff. There are other little tweaks like that that we've learned over the last 20 or 30 years, help the environment. So pervious paving is just kind of the door that opens up. The second is water and sewer. And it's going to be upgraded, I understand, from the presentation. I'm concerned that there isn't enough water, that enough water is provided, and that the sewage doesn't go into the Delaware. And I was one of the people that served on the original management plan that was written in order to protect the Delaware, and it comes down to projects like these. So to me, that's a deal-breaker. The sewage can't go into the river. And the last item that I have of concern is I understand that these guys are looking for a tax break. And to me, that's just absolutely reprehensible. I welcome them here and glad... I hope that doesn't count against my time. I welcome them here, I'm glad that they are coming, but not at the expense of those of us that pay taxes. So come, invest your money, do your thing. I don't, I really don't think it's fair, I don't think it's right, I don't think it's needed. Nothing in that gentleman's presentation has said that we can only come if the money happens, you know, if we get a special deal. So I'm against it. To me, that's a deal-breaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just one quick thing that Glenn pointed out is the IDA and the tax. We brought that up a couple of meetings ago. That is not anything that the planning board has control of. That is a county-driven issue. That has nothing to do with this board, really nothing with the town. The county is the one that makes that determination. Just to point that out.
Next person up is, is it Mav... B-A-E-L?
Mark Baez.
Mark Baez.
Mark Baez. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Baez. I'm president and CEO of the Sullivan County Partnership. Full disclosure, I bought my first car from Glenn Pontier. It was a Volkswagen Beetle, and it was an awesome car. I don't know if he remembers that. So we are responsible, we're a business association in Sullivan County. We made up close to 200 members, and we are the economic development folks in the county. We nurture, and we help, and we guide, and we advise people on coming to Sullivan County to plan their business here. Most people think that most of the work that we do is industrial, commercial in nature. We've done a lot of that, we continue to do that. But I can tell you, for the last four or five years, most of the work that we've been doing has been tourist-based. We're actually excited about the things that are happening in the western Sullivan parts of our county. We really were not able to do much in years past, but certainly, projects like this give us a level of excitement because it allows us to help projects along that can positively stimulate the economy in areas that in the past didn't have that. So as you look at the county in general, at its whole, you have a lot of projects out there that are going through the same thing. They're taking sites, they're taking venues, facilities, that for lack of a better term, might be a little tired. They've been at it for a long time, and the next thing you know, someone comes in, invests, cleans them up. I wouldn't call it an adaptive reuse because basically, the use is going to be the same. It's just going to be better, it's going to be cleaner, it's going to be more responsible. And certainly, that's something that appeals to us. There could be, in our view, no better economic development project than taking a site that already has its use and turning it back into a more useful economic simulator. It's a lot better than doing green space for the environment and sustainability and all of those things. So that's really something that is exciting to us. We had the meeting a couple of weeks ago. We're glad to post that and to get information out there. And one of the things that we took away from it is that this project is going to be positive for the community. And I can speak on behalf of the board that we support it. We think that it's going to solve a lot of problems that may be there now. We're particularly excited during the presentation when we saw the cleanup efforts, and I think it was like two tons of garbage and material that were cleaned out of the river, which to me was astounding. It was amazing. And that's certainly something that you want. You want a neighbor that's going to have responsibility to be able to do that. We think that the new paradigm, the new shift in family-friendly, is something that's happening throughout the county, and that this fits in with that and with that community. And again, we're excited about it, and we think that we support it for a whole lot of it. Thank you.
Next person, Rachel. Is it Moreno?
Moreno. Moreno. Thanks so much. Thanks also to the planning board for expanding this so that we can have time to have a conversation and dialogue. So I am Rachel. I'm a mom. I live in Ulin, 39 Martin Road. I've been up here for over a decade. I'm a taxpayer. And just hearing Sullivan County representative talk about this project, that it's going to be good for the environment, is worrying to me. It is worrying to me as a mom, worrying to me as a community member. I'm urging the planning board to really think about and induce a lot of due diligence and deny the expansion and the special permits until an independent environmental study can be done. I think the applicant made a really good point, and there are experts out there who know things better than me or everyone. And I think it behooves us to get an independent environmental study to understand the environmental impact and the community impact. You know, I heard the applicant talk about the investment that's happening on the site. I'm really curious around what is the investment happening in the community? What kind of dollars are coming in? So, you know, if this project will have an impact on our well water, potential impact on our well water, on the river, on the community, on taxes potentially? Understand that the abatement is not, you know, is not something that is in your control, but if a multimillion-dollar corporation is coming into our small town, they should be holding up their lion's share of what those taxes are, and that should be evaluated. So a few things, a few things, a time for dialogue, and the last thing I'll say is, you know, I'm a mom of a four-year-old as well, and I've tried to keep a lot of, the reason we moved up here was because of the beauty and the environment and everything that's laid out in the comprehensive plan, which I think the planning board should make a decision and, you know, support new opportunity, new business opportunity, new economic opportunities. And I, for one, am pro-business, but it has to align with the comprehensive plan and the principles of that which was stated and instated by this town. So thank you so much.
Travis, Travis?
I'm sorry, Jeff, what was the name again?
Travis. T-R-A? Yes.
I'm Steiimlve.
S-T-E-I-M-L-V.
That's correct.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank the planning board for allowing me to speak tonight. To give some context, who I am, I've been in the community for 29 years. I've been a volunteer in the community for 10. I am a wastewater and water treatment expert. That is what I do by trade. The presenter stated very early on that they intended on making this a cleaner campsite. However, they plan on using a septic and leach field system in order to do so. A septic and leach field system does nothing for nutrient or waste treatment besides separate solids. It does not allow for advanced treatment for the removal of harmful nutrients as ammonia, phosphorus, nitrate, and fecal bacteria. Leach field systems are a thing of the past, and when you're talking about quantities of water in excess of 20,000 gallons a day, those volumes need to be treated. We've learned our mistakes in the past. We look at other communities and businesses that have invested in wastewater treatment facilities, and we should honor them for that. They've protected us. They've done things that have been noble. But when we look at this project and we think that that's going to be a cleaner environment and a better place for our community, that is a lie. With expanding discharge limitations from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the DRBC, which is the Delaware River Basin Commission, this system will not meet those limitations, and you cannot look at this presenter and say that this in good faith will be a good thing for the Delaware River. What we as taxpayers need to understand is, has an independent environmental study been conducted on this site, and where is that information? We also need to know what the impacts on our private well systems are going to be. The intended consumption of this water system is in excess of 30,000 gallons per day. I live nearby to this neighborhood, or this parcel. How is that going to affect my water? How is that going to affect my neighbor's water? We have the right to understand the impacts before it's already done. We need an independent environmental study, we need an independent water study, and the public needs to know that information now. The last thing I'll say is, the presenter said they are going to give you 89 equivalent full-time positions with the cost of $2.5 million. Simple math tells you that that is $13.50 an hour.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Although I believe, I'm not used to coming to these meetings. And I'm not sure how they run. Apparently, this is not a give-and-take. It's simply a presentation of thoughts, and they sort of go into the ether. I think it would be preferable if there were some responses. For example, some of the, two of the questions that I asked might serve everyone's interest if they got responses to them. They're not difficult questions. For example, I'd like to know whether the water park aspect of this project is going to be open to the public, or will it be only for registered campers? And again, if you get an answer to that, I think it might dissuade a lot of people's concerns that are here. The second question that I have, which is something that was just raised eloquently, which is environmental impact study. Has one been done? If there was, we should know about it. And I think that's very, very important, as the gentleman before me said, not after the fact to find out what the consequences are, but before the fact, before the vote to... Thank you.
The next person is Kelly Boyer.
I want to thank the planning board for all the work you've put into this and work that you're going to do. For the past half-century, I've been drawn to the Delaware River and its tributaries. Like many others, unspoiled nature, breathtaking scenery are the calling cards by which we treasure and by which we promote ourselves. These blessings existed long before Pimfo and the corporate ownership discovered us. The very essence of their business model is to exploit to the nth degree the natural beauty we have so carefully cultivated over generations. Utterly without sensitivity to the community, they proposed an oversized project. The project is inconsistent with the very values they wish to exploit in furtherance of their business plan. Why am I so harsh on this project? Well, it has to do with what kind of a neighbor Pimfo appears to be. First, have they been upfront and transparent? Hardly. This is phase one. When are they going to disclose the nature of phase two and phase three, which have been mentioned? What don't they want us to know? I think that's important. Secondly, I know, I know you don't want me to mention this, but are they going to pay their fair share of taxes like their predecessors and the neighboring businesses? No. They don't intend to, and I'm going to keep mentioning it at every chance I get because this is very important. Rather, they're going to seek a tax abatement and put the bill on the local and county taxpayers for emergency services and public safety, and that's not right. Thirdly, is their proposal aesthetically compatible with the town's zoning master plan and the intent of the federal scenic and recreational river designation? Again, I say no. We promote ourselves by posting, in all our economic development, we post pictures of how beautiful the river is, and it's, it's not, it's not, it's the river and the hillside, but it's not hundreds of cabins stacked together in long rows, sidestepping our zoning requirements of front yard and side yard setbacks. Maybe we should ask an eight-year-old if these are cabins or RVs. Maybe we'll get an honest answer. The standard park model sleeps 10. The median park model sleeps 8. All of these units have a kitchen, bathroom, and are hooked up to electricity, water, and sewage. A small home by any honest account. Normally, hundreds of new homes would be a major subdivision. Shouldn't we hold these small homes to residential standards as once...
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Well...
I'll give up my time.
Okay, your name is?
Mary Jones. Give me three more minutes.
Shouldn't we hold these small homes residential standards once permanently installed, skirted with water, electric, septic, fire pits, decks, and parking? Are they RVs any longer? Seriously? Fourthly, what are the numbers which Pimfo will grace our town with next Memorial Day or Fourth of July? The answers are unknown and undisclosed. A mountain coaster and water slot is going to bring additional traffic. What are the numbers? Unknown and undisclosed. Are we prepared to have Highlands population double? Double the existing population today? We need only look at the posted comments on Kitatini's website to have a hint of what we're in for. I've done just that. There were 127 reviews, 17 were average, 22 were positive, 78 were negative, 27... 17 were average, 22 were positive, 78 were negative, 27 rating it poor, and 51 rating it terrible. By almost four to one, the comments were negative. This is not good publicity for Barriville or the town of Highland. Read the comments. These are direct quotes. Not a quiet wilderness experience. Area was trashy. Worst camping experience ever. We were sandwiched between two campsites. No one enforced the rules. Toilets were clogged. No place for family camping. Toilets were overflowing. Loud music blasted all night. We called to complain about noise and were hung up multiple times. These are all direct quotes from their webpage. It's time to send PIMFO back to the drawing board to scale this proposal down. The application is incomplete. There are too many unknowns. The community deserves full and complete disclosure. The suggestion that the number of guests will be reduced is entirely bogus and misleading. Seriously. You're going to invest $44 million to reduce the number of guests? Let's not be naive about this. We deserve honesty and transparency. Unless we have all the facts honestly stated, it must be a no. We implore the planning board to protect the community, to have your discussions with the applicant, get the project right-sized for the community, and I thank you for all the work you're doing.
Ted W E I N E R?
Welcome. Thank you. Welcome to my neighbors. As most of you know, this area is very special. It's miracle. It's magical. My name is Theodore Weiner. I live in Newland, New York. I'm a veterinarian. And so, this area is magical. The environment is magical. The balance is magical. The people are magical. The air is beautiful. And most people come up here because they feel the magic every day that they breathe in the air. This plan is going to be totally destructive to the environment, to the neighborhood, to the people. What are the benefits? There are none. Once you give them permission to develop this area, you can't go back. I've just read the Gorgon New York. The complaints are enormous. And then what about the bald eagles? What about the bears? What about the dares? What about the environmental balance? It's going to be destroyed. And this area, as I said, is magical. You guys have the responsibility, and ladies, have the responsibility to protect this area, to protect my homeland. And I hope you make the right decision. This is a destructive area.
Cher Chris K O I S T?
Pick up?
Does it Cher Chris?
She's coming. She's coming.
Cherry. Cherry Chris.
C-H-E-R-E?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can build your houses on tractor-trailer beds and make them houses, and you put skirts around them. Those are mobile homes. They are not RVs. Okay? You're going to be connecting these things to solid-state electricity and plumbing. Those are not RVs. If you tried to get this plan through saying that I'm going to put this many mobile homes, you would never get it. Ever. You tried to get a project like this in the Berkshires, and you refused to put a cap on how many people, how many vehicles, how many houses you were going to put in, and you're not willing to do that here either. You leave it open-ended so that you can raid the side of the mountain, and you are ruining it for everybody around here. You say, oh, well, our wells are down below. Well, yeah, if you take the water out below, the wells up above have no water.
Right.
Okay? So, stop lying to us. Stop not answering questions, and stop trying to pull the wool over our eyes because we weren't born yesterday.
Poppen.
Can you spell the last name, please?
P-O-P-P-E-N-D-I-E-C-K.
Doing it since I was four. So, most of what I had to say has been said better than I could. So, it's just, I want to thank the planning board for your careful attention to this and for not rushing this process. And I want to ask you to interact with the applicant, to get from them a figure, it's comparable to kilowatt-hours. It would be person nights. They have talked about reducing the number of bed equivalents or sites, but expanding the typical length of stay. And so, while they try to reassure us by telling us there's going to be fewer people in the peak, I'd like to know, we need a figure that would help in assessing the impact on the aquifer, on the environment, of person, day, week, use of the space. I also want to say to the applicant that if you are able to right-size this plan, as Mr. Boyer said, and make it one that will fit with our values of the environment, the magic that calls us here, and by the way, I live at 142 Eld Revealin Road, say that. You don't need a mountain coaster. And... Okay, the river, and the woods, and the marshmallows. Those are enough. Okay? So, you can take the money you were going to invest in the mountain coaster and use it so that you won't need a tax abatement. Thanks.
Lou Moreno, yes. I want to thank the planning board for hosting this and for expanding it for this evening. I needed it. I'm not really sure what else I can add. So many of my neighbors have spoken so eloquently about what concerns us. I just want to say, as someone that has been up here for the last 10 years, I moved up here for its beauty, and I moved up here for its community. We had the opportunity to move into a new house, and we did so, we moved to Yewin from our roots. And the only reason we stayed in this community was because of the people and because of the area itself. I feel that PIMFO is really going to challenge, strain, and degrade what is so beautiful about here outside of our community. So, thank you very much.
Where is that? W E S T?
It's the first name, Jeff.
E R I N?
Yes, that's me, E R I N W E S T. I live on Corks Road Road of Barriville. Thank you for having me tonight. I kind of resent what the slick lawyer from Albany said over here. I like your suit. About the, this is not RVs, and RVs are dirty. My parents were just here for two and a half weeks. They have an RV. They're doing RV life in their retirement, and their RV is in impeccable shape. It is beautiful. They come in and they do camping the way we all should do camping, which is leaving the area better than when you arrived. They're clean. And so, I resent that statement on my parents' behalf, because they're currently camping in the Berkshires right now, and they're doing it right. I think that everybody else has said a lot of great stuff. I want to ask you, the planning board, this is a corporate entity. They have repeated this carbon copy in different ways over 26 times now. Have you done any research about their other properties? Have you done any research on these towns that they've gone to? There are a lot of small towns the size of ours. Have you looked into the long term of this? How has this affected the town in the long term? Have you reached out to anybody in those towns? Email, telephone, any way? Have you found out how they feel about it? How does their planning board, how do they feel about having them as neighbors? Are they holding up their end of the deal? Are they carrying their weight? Have, have these towns had to expand their emergency services because of these water parks and mountain coasters? And don't tell me that accidents never happen on these things, because they do. And so, have they had to put extra money into their emergency services? Let's really do our due diligence on this. We can find out what we're in for if we just look for it. It's all out there. I've done some research, too. I implore you to do the same. Thank you so much.
Eve Fisher, E V E F I S H E? And just to say, you're on Maxwell Road?
Yes. Hi, my name is Eve Fisher. I own property in Barriville and have lived in the area for the past 10 years. Camp PIMFO is completely upscale for our community and proximity to the river. The development proposed, the proposed infrastructure is massive. It does not comply with our zoning or comprehensive plan and is completely unnecessary for the success of the business. Kitatini is one of the most successful businesses in our area. The gross expansion of the septic system and plans to add 200 cabins with bathrooms and bedrooms is essentially creating a small town, bigger than the hamlet of Barriville itself. How can we still call this a campground? This is a corporate manipulation meant to exploit zoning of heritage campgrounds. Please don't let history repeat itself. Everybody reminisces about the heyday of the Catskills family and wants that back. What's not talked about is that the economy completely crumbled and left us with a massive amount of deteriorating infrastructure. We need to be smart as we head into a time of recession. The first thing people stop spending money on is vacation, and I imagine really expensive camping. Please say no to the expansion of the septic system and limit the cabins to what has already been grandfathered in, which is already way beyond what our zoning allows, quote, "our zoning." Any establishment consisting of a building or group of buildings providing sleeping accommodations with individual bathrooms designed for use by transient travelers shall be limited to 12 or fewer units within the designated Delaware River corridor. Please say no to the proposed mountain coaster, which would mostly be located on land-zoned residential agriculture. What kind of precedent would this set? How can you justify allowing that in a residential area? Would you appreciate this on your street or close to your house? This multimillion dollar corporation is asking for many exceptions. They're asking us to allow them to change the landscape of our town. They're asking us to change the rules for them, and for what? Jobs we can't fill? It's common knowledge that our local businesses are constantly struggling to keep themselves staff. All of this is doesn't add up because of the project. If you give Camp PIMFO the special permits to expand this infrastructure, then that infrastructure will be grandfathered in forever. If we have learned anything from the past, if that PIMFO will not be there forever, how might that infrastructure be used in the future? I say, let's not find out. Please consider the Sullivan County Division of Planning Concerns and Potential Impacts to the River from excess nitrogen and other septic leach that could lead to harmful algae blooms, quote, "The excessive heat experienced this summer has led to the appearance of such harmful algae blooms in Sullivan County's lakes for the first time." Please choose our community over a corporation. Please choose the Delaware over a corporation. Please say no to things the planning board plans not to have.
Can you read this next name?
Yeah, I haven't written a paper in a while. I worked with Marcel Wintegrad.
Can you spell that?
Yeah, it's M-A-R-B-E-L-L-A, and my last name is W-I-N-O-G-R-A-D. So, I had a lot of questions coming here today, and you all asked it. It's kind of hard to follow my fiance with the wastewater thing, but I grew up in this community and left. I left for almost eight years and decided to come back. And what brought me back was community, the nature, the river, we all love going down in the summer, and just a little bit of a sense of home. Everyone here knows each other in some way. We all went to school together. I went to school in Port, but I still know people in this room. This corporation, I have been on a mountain roller coaster. They're not quiet. They're loud. They echo through the river, through the mountain, through the kids screaming. I mean, they're terrifying. It's not quiet. You can't come here and say it's quiet. We need noise testing. I'm not going to go into the water park. But another thing is, my future family works with the fire service and the MTs. They're 100% volunteer. We're adding more stress that I am assuming they already have with the river. This is a luxury that we don't need. This is not a necessity in the community. We have the river. I never thought I was going to be up here talking to you guys, but we have a river, which is essentially a water park. It is natural. We don't need an artificial splash pad. We don't need a roller coaster. We need hikes. We need trails. We need outdoor bike trips. There's so many things we can do. That being said, thank you.
Y E H L?
John Yale. I live at 25 Rocker Road. And the comments I want to make tonight, a lot of them have been repeated. They're concerned about water. They are going to be drawing thousands, over 20,000 gallons, almost 30,000 gallons of water. Not to mention, and that's, I think, only impacting the people that are going to be using the facilities, the bathrooms, getting up in the morning, brushing their teeth and sawing. How many gallons is it going to fill, it's take to fill this water park? That's going to draw from our resources. Has a hydro geological study been done yet? I moved from an area where a developer came in and built 18 houses. After building 18 houses, my neighbor's wells went dry. They did a study on my house after I sold it, and it was determined that in order to supply enough water for the house I sold, the new owners had to put in a 250-gallon reserve tank to support the three-bedroom house that I sold. With that alone, you should just consider how much water they're going to consume. I'm not going to, you know, I've got an expert over here to talk about wastewater, so I'm not going to talk about that. I did some research on that. You know way more than I do. The other comments I want to make, too, besides this. We talked about Yellowstone Park out in Gardner, New York. I'm very familiar with that park, because I lived in the next town called Plataque. And if there are campers that are going to be coming in and out of there, they cause a big burden to the traffic. There was one lane in the town, and it happened to be right next to a grocery stall called Hannah Place. Every Friday night, you couldn't get into Hannah Place. Why? Because there's a dozen campers parked in there, fifth-wheels, Class A's, travel trailers. That was our local community. Could you imagine parking three class, fifth-wheel class RVs in packs? I mean, let's get realistic. The traffic around that area, accidents did happen. People don't know how to drive an RV. They, you don't need a special license for it. I've had four RVs, everything from a pop-up to a fifth-wheel to a 30-foot, 38-foot travel trailer. They're not easy to drive, and these windy roads do have an impact to them. The only way you can get around corners properly is to take wide turns and go on other people's lights. That's dangerous. That's something we need to consider as well. Also, you know, we talked about this community, and I'm new to the community only about two years. Okay? I will admit that. But I liked this area. That's why we came down here. We had choices to go just about anywhere. I walk out in my house, and I can pretty much work anywhere in the Hudson Valley. So, it was my choice to actually show up here. One thing I also wanted to touch on just a little bit is the fact that this community is ours. It's our home. I'm new to this area, but I learned tonight, this company
Thank you.
had tried to actually go and build this, build this community in other locations, and they were denied.
Thank you.
I would encourage you to also deny it.
Thank you. I live on Route 97. Not going to tell you where. Thank you to the planning board and to the PIMFO group for your presentation tonight. I want to echo a lot of the sentiments that other people have stated. You know, obviously, this level of engagement is really beautiful, and the fact that everybody cares about this town is... cares about this town is a wonderful sign. So, Finfo, welcome to the neighborhood. These are the people in your neighborhood. I just really would like to point out that, you know, there's, there's a character of our area. I've been in business for 10 years here, and it's a very, very unique community, and it's a very unique place to do business. And I think that sustainability is something that is key, and I think there's two elements of sustainability that maybe are not being addressed. That's affordable housing. If we're going to bring in lots of low-wage or medium-wage jobs, where are these people going to live? What strain does that put on our housing inventory in the community? And then the second has been stated over and over, but I think that's the mountain coaster. So many important people in our community live around many St. Ford and our neighbors to Kitty Tini. We have veterans, we have people that are the namesake of our town. Sorry, Martha Eldred Werzel, I'm going to call you out over here. I don't think she deserves to listen to a mountain coaster at all hours, even if it's limited to, you know, to, you know, stopping at dark. It doesn't matter. It's, it's a quality of life issue and it changes the character of the community. I mean, clearly, I'm not naive enough to think that Finfo is going to casually spend $40 million. I mean, we thank them for that investment in the infrastructure. However, the, the change of the, of the character of the community and what, what the residents have to contend with should be at the forefront of this project. Thank you.
If there's anybody else that would like to speak, you can step up to the podium and say your name and address.
Couple of things.
Name?
Larry Fishman, Highland Lake.
Please spell your last name.
F I S H M A N. I tend to agree with the problem with these quote-unquote "permanent" buildings that they're going to be putting up. That's my only comment as far as that goes, but I have a question. They're talking about the usage and everybody is complaining about whether it's going to impact on the well and the septic and all, but Kitty Tini's been operating for 80 years and they have thousands of people coming in every weekend, and they have wells and they have septic. Has there been, my question is, has there been any problem with the existing campgrounds? I'm not aware of any. So.
I'd just like to have that question answered. Your name, please?
Fred Stein, S T I N A. I work with the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. And I, there's been so many great things discussed tonight, and the Delaware Riverkeeper Network supports those. This is not the right project for, for this area and the impact on the Delaware River. I wanted to just add three different things. I mean, we've heard from, from, from the applicant, you know, we talked, we heard tonight about outdated and inadequate septic systems, you know, that they promote as great for, for the environment and great for the river, but it's outdated and it's inadequate. We're hearing about tax giveaways. That is inappropriate for a multimillion-dollar organization. And we're talking about a lot, a lack of unbiased information. We feel that, we urge the town to ask Finfo for the escrow dollars so that the township can hire its own unbiased engineering firm that has the, the water quality and the light pollution and the traffic information. So the information that you're reading, that you're going to be basing this very important decision on, is unbiased. Clearly, the engineers, et cetera, that Finfo is, is paying, they're, they're leaning towards Finfo. That's just the way it works. And then my final point is, in the very beginning, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, you gave a list of the, all the other agencies that are reviewing these, this application. UDC, National Park Service, DOT, and others. But nobody is as, is as important as this planning board. There's nobody, none of those agencies have the stake in whether this project moves forward or not than the township planning board, because none of them give a damn. But we do really need to deny this, but in lieu of that, get the unbiased information, and Finfo should be paying for that. Thank you.
Just one quick thing. They do have an escrow set up. All their engineering through Keystone Engineering, that's all. They pay for that. They have, they have an escrow set up. Everything, even the sunflower, sunup for tonight is paid for that.
The, the breadth of studies that have to be done and the understanding of traffic and wastewater and, and well water and that, and engineers can do a lot of great things, but it's like, it's like the medical industry. You don't go see a heart doctor if you're having a foot problem. You should be getting, having all of these experts come in to give you the kind of detailed information that a civil engineer may know a little bit about, but he may not know everything about wastewater, he may not know everything about traffic, light pollution, air quality, those sorts of things. So that's what I'm saying. So there is, there probably is an escrow for your tax or your township engineer, but it should be broader.
Your name?
Hi, my name is Joseph Christ, K R I S T. I live up on Route 55 in Eldred. I'm going to face this way because some of the comments are to you guys in terms of understanding what needs to be asked, but we got to make this gentleman in the suit here understand that there are some straightforward, simple questions that this group of people have about things like taxes, about things like jobs. Okay? This is the second meeting where people from, I understand you're not prepared to answer tonight, but this is two meetings in a row where straightforward questions like that have been greeted with shrugs of the shoulder, condescending explanations of tax increment financing and things like that. I come to this meeting with 45 years of public finance experience. I probably had a thousand guys in suits and laptops come in and tell me how much you love where you're going, how much you want to do for us, how wonderful this is going to be for us. Okay? Simple thing. Is your company prepared to say they're going to go forward with this project without a tax abatement? I understand that you don't decide on the tax abatement, but you can make approval of this project contingent on things like that. I understand that, no. I understand that there's laws and rules, okay? But pretty much, agencies like Mr. Baiz's agency that get involved in this, they can kind of do whatever they want to push things the right way. Okay? People want to know, when our school district here in the tax base is facing the need to finance an estimated $12 million of improvements, which may not even take care of everything they need, like solar power and electric buses and things that would be good for the environment, as opposed to a mountain coaster you've already admitted isn't necessary to the project's success. I don't know his name. I'll just describe him as the gentleman in the gray vest and brown shoes who made one of the worst presentations I've ever seen in this business. He had no answers for anything. He mentioned Ruth Jones's name.
I'm going to interrupt you one. Excuse me. I said right from the beginning that we're going to keep the civil, we're not going to dare to keep water. Do you continue, please continue to speak, but I'm not.
Well, okay, then you have to ask those questions. You have to demand those answers. You have to tell them the project approval is contingent on the community being satisfied that people with impartial interests look at the reps and warranties that are made by people like this about sewers and water use and traffic and pollution. Okay? And you have to demand that they come up with the answers. Otherwise, they don't deserve the tax bill. They don't deserve our support. If they have a good case to be made, they should make it, but they haven't been doing that, at least in the couple of weeks I've seen. So they got a lot, a lot of wood to chop if they want to get forward on this, and you can help them do that on our behalf.
Only one time?
Yep.
So I have one more comment. Does anybody else would like to speak?
Can I ask something quick?
Please come to the podium and say your name.
My name is Tinka, T I N K A. Last name?
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry.
Tinka, T I N K A. Last name is Streanova, S T O Y A N O V A. I have three questions towards the board. Thank you for giving us that opportunity to talk. Would you be asking these gentlemen how they want to support or a volunteer fire department or a volunteer ambulance and/or a non-existent constable force? Because accidents happen, medical, fire accidents, emergencies, and they are grounds. They're going to serve all of that, but they are on force because they will overbear the functions of all these volunteers that we are short of in our community. That's all I'm asking. Ask them and see if they have any answer to that.
Next question?
Hi, my name is Catherine Nicholson. I live in Eldred.
Can you spell your name?
N I C H O L S O M. I live on Old Minneson Ford Road. So I know that Camp Finfo was saying that they're going to bring 87 jobs, but I think one of my big fears is that they are going to end up creating a monopoly within our community. Like, how much of this money is going to end up going to other places? It's going to end up to this large corporation. We are not going to benefit from this. Yeah, so that's it.
Laquita Matthews, Berryville, New York.
Can you spell that, please?
L A Q U I T A. Matthews with two Ts. Simply, I think what I'm baffled about, isn't the Delaware River a protected watershed? I, when I first heard about this project, I was like, how can this possibly happen? We love this area for wildlife, eagles rafting down the river, and people, tourists come up here for that, not coming out of it.
Hello, my name is Eileen Resut, R E S A U I T. And I have property up on Drive Brook Road. And I don't have a house there yet, but I love to visit it. I love the area, which is why I invested in the area. And I just want to say, this is why I came here. I was born in New York City. I've lived in Jersey. But my little piece of paradise on Drive Brook Road is quiet. I have a stream, and it's, it's my heaven. And that's how I'd like to keep it. And this community makes it that way. And that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Challenging name for you guys. My name is Ayelit, just like I yell it. Ayelit Gezow, G E Z O W. And I just want to say.
I'm sorry, just for, can you spell your first name?
A Y E L E T. And I just want to say, who goes, Ponderry?
Can you save the microphone?
Who goes to the most beautiful nature, raw nature, and puts a roller coaster and, and water park? It's kind of like going to the desert and putting water there. Hmm, do we want Las Vegas here?
Hi. Lana, L A N A. And I'll spell the last name, B O R T O L O T.
B O R T.
O L O T. I live right up the road on Eldred Yulin Road. I've been here for a little more than a year. I grew up in Vermont. I know a lot about Act 250 and a lot of environmental issues that I grew up with. My grandma lived in Lackawaxin, so I've been around here for a long time. And I just kind of can't square with somebody wasting 30,000 gallons of water a day when we just came through a drought. And I don't know if that was the first drought up here or no, it's not going to be the last drought. And, you know, we don't have wildfires yet, you know, but we have weather conditions, and I think it's not just worrying about that today, but, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, because it's going to happen. That's all. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Nona Hall.
Can you spell that?
N O N N A. Last name is H A L L.
And from what town?
Eldred, Fraser. I just, I don't think anybody mentioned, or, actually, I'm accented on that topic, besides water and sewage. I think we all know that particular area occupied by beautiful eagles. And we actually, we have a beautiful observation there, not that far from that project. And I wonder how it's going to be affected, you know, because besides, all water going to be affected, fish and stuff like that, but noise from mountain coaster and water park. So that particular area, we want to preserve for eagles, for other animals. They, they really don't leave, and so I just hope we're going to keep it.
Anybody else?
Can I come back?
Hi there, I'm Charles Wilkin, W I L K I N. I live on Irishtown Road in Narrowsburg. I think one of the things, when you look around this county, you know, all the big developments have been done, casino, Yon Center, Cartwright, they're all failures. This is a granite project. It would be a failure. Why? Because it does not embrace this area. And I think what Berryville and this area down here, this part of the county, doesn't need is another albatross. So I encourage you to not vote for this project. So, thank you. Think about that.
Hi, my name is Lori Stewart. I actually live in Narrowsburg. I just want to put on the record, because no one has said anything, is to, I know that you're all aware of the Barnes landfill that is above the land. And I just want to put the Barnes landfill on the radar for this public hearing. Thank you.
My name is Martha Eldred Werzel. I really wasn't going to say anything today, but I think it should be mentioned, she said about the Barnes landfill. I live a little further off than that, but in the summertime, when Kitty Tini was in full force, even a mile up the, up the mountain, we could still hear the noise. I don't want to have this in my backyard. My well only goes down 80 feet. If they're going to be taking a lot of water, are they going to pay me to have a new well though? I really don't think so. My husband has Parkinson's. We really don't need the aggravation that this is going to cause. I don't need it. We don't need it. And I would kind of hope that you would all think the same way. I don't think this is anything Berryville, Eldred, Yulin, Minneson Ford, Sullivan County need. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I don't know, to the people who's been to the meetings before this, like, it's been, we've had great public turnout. I mean, today is a great day. I don't think there's been a, a planning board public hearing with this many people at it ever. I, I think it's great. I invited, I invited every person I could. I, I talked to people for months to make sure that for or against people that I know, I've, I've been here a long time, and you know my dad, he knows everybody I don't, and to get as many people as I could to come here for this reason, for public input, so the applicant could see how great this town is and how all these people are concerned about this town. You know, it's not like, it's not like a different place. It's not like Albany, it's not like Rochester, it's not Buffalo, it's Berryville. So it's Town Heil. It's a great place. So, so one good thing, again, is that the applicant gets to see a sample of how, how great this town is. So, like I said before, you know, the next step for us as the board is on, so on Monday, the applicant forwarded the additional comments that the National Park Service wanted, and that's when their 45-day review period starts, is Monday. So they have until November 10th, the Park Service, their district office, not the office here at Beach Lake, the district office sends a letter to the UDC, and then they send a letter back to, to this board. So that's November 10th. So what we're going to do as a board is we, we are going to recess this public hearing until next month, and we will await for the letter from the Park Service. And next month, then the applicant can respond to everybody's questions here tonight, and then we will have our, we'll have a meeting October 26th. I was trying to figure out the question. So our, we're going to recess the public hearing tonight to October 26th. And I'm going to, I would like to ask for a motion for that.
I make that motion. I'll second.
Who seconded?
Tim. Why not use that time to build on the environment impact? You've got time.
Uh, it would, we're going to see what the, what the National Park Service says first before, not saying that that won't happen, but I just, I want their information first. Not that it's good or bad, just that if we have to add to what we have there, it would also-
We're going to be here?
Um, if you want, if the public wants it here?
Yeah.